And this time of the year just really makes me happy. Our family does believe red, white and blue and very proud of it. So I hope all of us will try to go out and celebrate the existence of such a wonderful country that we have. Can you say anything?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a couple things to add to the agenda. One is the first to approve John Newman's assistant principal for two months at Lucanto High School effective July 1st, 2016. And then, under the workshop session, we're going to add a budget update. So if you'll add under human resources, Shawn Newman, and under the workshop, the budget update. And would that come out in motion to approve the agenda as... The agenda is... Second. It's been moved by Mr. Bryant, second by Mrs. Dodd to approve the agenda as... All in favor?
Aye.
Pus, Carrie School Zero, okay. Do you have any citizen comments? Now, school support services, Pollak, are you going to do that portion?
Good morning, school board.
School board.
I'm reading forth the year and then the sixteen, seventeen school year. I was having a photo of student conduct.
Turn it. Turn it on.
Good morning. Bringing forward to you today, recommendation for several amendments to the Code of Student Conduct for the sixteen, seventeen school year. The amendments I'm bringing forth were presented from legislation after we advertised for the Code of Conduct and it went off to Pride for printing.
Do we have a motion?
I... Do you need a motion or...? I move to approve, to advertise for a public hearing at the August 9th, 2016, school board meeting to approve the addendum to the 2016, 2017 Code of Student Conduct.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Bryant to approve to advertise for a public hearing at the August 9th, 2016, school board meeting to approve the addendum to the 2016, 17 Code of Student Conduct. You have a change.
Well, it says paragraph eight, nine, nine, and so that was...
Right, we had two nines, it's supposed to be eight, nine, ten.
And then eleven on page two.
I have the correct copy, I didn't realize the board did not.
Yeah, it's okay. Change ours.
If you see on page one, it says paragraph eight, and this is paragraph nine, and this is paragraph nine, and that would be paragraph 10 under student rights and responsibilities on the last paragraph on that page. And then this is paragraph 10 under where you're giving the school rate, you're not per student. That should be paragraph four. So it was just really a noteworthy thing as well for this issue.
Do we need to amend the motion?
Obviously, as a...
As amended, good.
Do we have discussion now?
I'll bring up one point now. The new Code of Conduct books have already been printed. These, tell me, how do we get this information? How are we going to get this information out?
Unfortunately, we've had to do this in the past because of the ruling on legislation. Once it goes to public hearing and then it has the final approval, schools make copies of this. It's given out hopefully in time with the Code of Conduct. If not, then it will be given out at a different time. Students will be, share this information as they're given the Code of Conducts, and I'm sure Mr. Bradshaw will include it in his presentation to the schools as added items to the code. It also will be on the webpage so that parents will be aware that there is an addendum to the Code of Student Conduct.
Okay, so the beginning, addendum will come out. So obviously, parents probably are going to read this, right?
We hope so, yes.
Or they may catch their attention, right? So what catches my attention in here is the money per student that we spend, which I understand how that's developed. But how are we going to communicate that to parents when they see that a child at Central Ridge Elementary we spend significantly less on than a child at Florville Elementary?
I had a little bit of conversation with Tammy Wilson about that, knowing that that probably would, would be a concern for some or questionable by some. And we had a conversation about that. I don't know if she wants to address the board in reference to that.
Well, I think it would be good for us to be on the same page with how we explain it, because I think all that question's asked of me on this. So I think it would be good to have that discussion out, or now to your...
Terry, you want to jump over to discuss?
Just repeat your question, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, obviously, there's going to be questions regarding the amount of money per student. Which is not a decision that we have set, it's a decision that the state has set for us. But can you explain, if you were to get a call from a parent on these figures, how would you explain it to them as far as the reason for the money per student difference?
Well, you have to start off with your staff, depending on seniority of staff. You may have a school with a high seniority and one that has a lower seniority. Or elementary schools, let's say we have one principal and one AP at every school. Well, we have significantly less children at Homo Sassa and Floral City, so then that's going to look like we spend more money per child because those principals cost about the same, no matter what school you're at. You have different buildings, the buildings are bigger. I mean, that takes into account your electricity, it takes into account lawn maintenance, your custodians, and various other things. So you're going to have more staff, you know, at bigger schools, but you could have some that have a higher, like I said, a higher seniority and some that don't.
We're going to talk about business economies of scale, right? Because the smaller populated schools do cost more, and expenses are more. I, you know, I'm interested in the seniority of the staff, I guess. So we're actually looking at schools that may have a more senior group of teachers that are being paid more, right? So that would be something that we would...
Well, like, yeah, in Central Ridge, I think they've typically been a lower amount because they have had a younger amount of teachers because they were in newer schools and a lot of other teachers have kind of established themselves in another school. So while there, you know, there's, that's one that has nothing to do with the infrastructure in any other way than that. Also, I think, like, for example, they have energy efficiency.
Exactly.
In operations where you go to...
Because we built that school.
That's right. But, you know, I think Mr. Dodd brings up a good point, and I don't know if we're able to still add it at this point, but maybe we have a section on the website and then we include a link that goes back to either a, you know, an FY, an FAQ, or something that basically just says additional information. Or maybe we add a line that says these costs are...
There is the school accountability report is on the website, which breaks it out by salaries, benefits, energy services, by the object code per school. So that's where these numbers are generated from, but that is available on the website. There's a direct link on the main page.
And maybe in the book, I wonder if we included that.
That link.
That link in that way, we, you know, we can say for more information or details on this report, or something. I don't know, is that...
Yeah, if it's on the website, I think that would be, at least if someone's interested, at least they might look at that, if that explains it.
I would keep in mind when you talk to people that that is not what we budget for schools, it's what we spend for schools, there's a difference. We staff schools equitably. We staff them based on their needs. But the budget, what we spend on schools comes out, we have no way of knowing whether Ms. Brown's going to hire a teacher with 30 years' experience or one with one year's experience. And that's a big difference. But as far as staffing, they give relatively the same number of teachers when it comes to class size. Sometimes that'll distort that one or two teachers of the level. But, you know, those are, every school is treated equally and the same in that respect.
And, you know, even, I think there's only like two state reports that come out that talk about average salary per district and also average number of years of service or for, I'm sorry, whatever's the term we just used, for those that have worked longer.
Seniority.
Tenure, thank you, seniority. Not tenure, but seniority. Those two reports I know come out that are on the state. And Citrus, I believe, is at like number one, number three often of seniority. Teachers like to stay in Citrus County. Go figure, Ms. Bryant. I know that's no surprise to us, but, so that's going to mean that there are times when we have that seniority that just throws those numbers so far off.
So should we put a statement in there of a link or what?
Who has this brought in?
For more information regarding how the cost per student is calculated, please see the Citrus County School District Capital Airport located on the school district. Let A T A serve for you.
I think that would be good.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make motion as stated by our attorney.
I'll put that on the paper. Probably just to square the cities.
Is there something else? Okay, we're okay with the capital eligibility and everything, everything else, okay. For both, all in favor?
Aye.
Pus, Carrie School Zero, thank you. Okay, next, the business support services, Susan.
Good morning. The first item is to approve the instructional support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
I move to approve the instructional support recommendations. It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mrs. Dodd to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Goldenrod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pus, Carrie School Zero, thank you.
Next agenda item is to ask approval for Jason Coon to be named principal of Lucanto High School beginning July 1st, 2016.
I move that we approve the recommendation of Jason Coon as principal of Lucanto High School effective July 1st, 2016.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Bryant to approve Jason Coon as principal of Lucanto High School beginning July 1st, 2016. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pus, Carrie School Zero, thank you.
The next agenda item is to ask approval of Tara Wells to be named the assistant principal of Inverness Primary School effective July 18th, 2016.
I move to approve Tara Wells as assistant principal at Inverness Primary School beginning...
18th, July 18th.
Yes.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve Tara Wells as assistant principal at Inverness Primary School effective July 18th, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Pus, Carrie School Zero, thank you. And next?
The next agenda item is to ask approval of Shawn Newman to be named the 12-month assistant principal at Lucanto High School effective July 1st, 2016.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Shawn Newman as assistant principal with 12-month contract at Lucanto High School effective July 1st, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve Shawn Newman as assistant principal on a 12-month contract at Lucanto High School effective July 1st, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pus, Carrie School Zero, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Assistant principal, back to you. Even more than I do. Any questions from the board? Does Mr. Kennedy have any...
No.
So therefore, we adjourn, submit the break, but we can sit down. And we're going to go into the workshop. Now, like, open the workshop. And the first on the agenda is to review the 2016, 2017 student progression plan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One item that I'd like to add is, I know you've received a copy of the changes. There were just a few numbering changes that we picked up on after we had submitted. So I have those highlighted here and just some grammatical. So I'd like to just take a moment, I've got Mr. Roland here as well as Mrs. Kirby here to answer any questions that you may have relative to the student progression plan. I just want to list down a few items that we have made changes. I know many of you serve on our different committees. This is one plan, which is a K-12, and we have gone through all the pieces and parts of it, matching it up to legislation, some of it, making some changes relative to wording or grammatical changes within the plan. So some of those I'm not going to lift out because they're just simple changes. The one piece is on page two, paragraph one and two, which is the teacher change request. And if you look at that section, that was a new section added. This is based on legislation, which is if a parent has the right to request his or her child transferred to another classroom teacher. I would like to share that, you know, in our schools, from my work with the principals, if a parent does have a request, the principal does listen to that request. This is not something that we don't normally do. We do listen to the parent, we hear the concerns, we then have conversation to see if that's something that can be addressed and then either make that change or adjustment or tell the parent, unfortunately, we're not able to do that. So we had to put it in here due to legislation, and you can see the wording that is listed there for you, those changes that had to be addressed. Questions on that piece? Because I know that was a new piece that was, we had to add into the plan.
I'm sorry, you were asking just questions on the one thing you talked about or on this question?
Well, on any of them, I'm just lifting, I'm not going to do every single thing because if it just says, change the word to only, there's no reason.
What about the progress monitoring plan on page 12, shall be with maybe? And I'm not sure on my page 12, if that's... If that's... Oh, it's not paragraph one of page 12.
Paragraph one, sentence four, the PMP may be incorporated, and before it said shall be, and we had to replace it with may. It sounds as if it was shall, so it may be incorporating co-parenting in the conference. Doesn't necessarily have to be.
And is that, is that verbatim from the law or where's that?
That, yes, this was a review of what legislate, you know, when we looked back and, you know, we were really just trying to match up and make sure that everything was in compliance with what was expected from statute. I just, I was lifting out the big, the big new edition piece, so I knew that was, you know, a change. So I did want to lift that out. But certainly, Mr. Dodd, if there's any other questions you have on those pieces, we can certainly address those. The first whole section is basically, you know, you can see we made some changes to with the assessment programs, you know, adding Algebra II, because it's now an eighth grade option, should read Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry, so that was added as well. FSA, paper-based, the PBT instead of just being PP, and that changed. For the other statewide assessments, for the English language learners, we used to have SELL, now it's called ACCESS for Ls, so that change was made.
A question right there. Eddie, a child must be screened. It's changed to each school site can allow 20% of receipts to go to students who do not meet this criteria. Would be explained in the management's report names. Pre-K?
Yes.
It's on the second page of the N L. Let's just give it a rest. First, I need to change.
And basically, this just gives schools, well, good morning. This gives schools the opportunity to have some students that may be able to be a better role model in a classroom. What we've found is, in some of our classrooms, because we take on these needy students, often the levels of conversation can't be where they need to be. And so this allows a little bit of flexibility within the school to be able to add on or to have one or two or three students that would be 18, be not as low scoring students. Does that make sense? And this is for pre-K. We're talking about only?
Okay, and it would not be for the whole day, would it?
It would be the whole day, yes, ma'am. So they basically would be part of our pre-K program. In the past, we were very strict about all students had to meet the criteria, and it was our lowest functioning students that qualified for a pre-K. Basically, this gives schools a little bit of flexibility to have a couple of students in their classroom to be able to help provide a higher level of conversation and to be able to...
And it locks the children that have yet a couple of students for work, but...
Yes, ma'am.
So schools like can't allow, but those, that's an individual school site's decision?
I would say that most schools will, have been doing this somewhat, and it just makes it more uniform, more consistent.
And is that because there may be available seats for a teacher?
We can have 18 students in our pre-K, actually, we actually wouldn't have, but we generally limit it to only having as many as 18 students. So they can have as many as three students that are not as struggling as some of their peers. But just again, allows a little bit more flexibility in the school. Because sometimes what winds up happening is we have a plethora of children who have maybe major behavior problems or just, it's their first exposure to school. So they're little guys, and we want to just make sure that they're providing the best environment that we can. So again, it just provides more flexibility for the schools.
Yeah, but I also wonder about children coming in, if it really works for them. And if it doesn't, if the child coming says, I need more, I need to get a higher level of work, I need these people to behave more. If they complain that it's not working for them, then we need to...
Well, I'll tell you that our teachers are becoming more and more masters of differentiating. And it's probably true, no more so than for pre-K kids, that they'll have children who've never held a pencil or a crayon, don't even know what a letter is, to those children that are pre-readers. And so they're already working. Typically, what they do is they'll have a small whole group instruction, and then they're breaking them up into small groups as they go throughout their day. And the other thing I can also remind you is that we did add three pre-K classrooms this year. So we are equivalent to 22, 25, so it allows all of our numbers overall to be higher. So I think that percentage-wise, we're going to be serving more needy students, but this allows us to also serve some of our students that would typically, perhaps not maybe go into our rooms.
So they can be regrouped, they might be with this group, and change to another. So they're not the same people all the time, they can change to different people.
And I'll tell you, at every school, we have at least two pre-K classrooms. So one of the models is for those two teachers to work between the two of them to be able to meet the needs of the students. So they generally each have a paraprofessional and a teacher, so it's four adults, and so they can regroup those students as they see the need.
So if a citizen weren't asked about entering your child in a pre-K program, I mean, really, it's not, it's open to any child, and it really isn't, it's not just based on if they need...
80% of the students would have significant need.
20%.
Right. And pretty much what has happened is that at the school, that range is a little bit different. There may be a particular school that just seems like every one of their children says need here. And then every one of those students, and then, but this would allow all of them to have at least a couple of students who could service a possible one. Not that the other children are possible ones, I should probably shouldn't say it that way, but just isn't as needed, right?
And one of those needy students might be, say, in baseball or something, whatever they're playing, might be, be leaving. So that's why I was worried about the regrouping.
And so that allows, depending on what the task at hand is, does a lot of teachers, regardless of this, they were able to do that anyway, but they would continue to do that anymore, so it's good teaching.
Oh, no, I mean, I'm happy that's the case, but I just want to make sure I understood it. So if the class is 18, and a school had 18 children with significant need apply, and three children applied that don't have significant need, it's still the principal's decision if they give it all to the 18 with significant need or if they add, if they cut three maybe out of the C and D, is that...
The reality is, is that the staffing specialist or whoever the school is designated does the screenings in the spring. Then typically, by the time they leave for the summer, they've identified the bulk of that class, and it's been based on need of what they've had so far. What tends to happen, so then they go ahead and they decide, okay, well, we have 13, 14, 15 students, let's go ahead and accept these three higher kids. And then what happens is August 1st, somebody decides, okay, and so we're not going to bump somebody out. So I just want you to know, you could get, oh, I did apply, they said they didn't have any room for me, even though my child is a needy child, but I didn't apply till August 1st. And so those slots could have already, have already been given away. They don't wait, you can't wait until August to make that final determination.
Can we go back, because I think we, I think we're at, was that, that was on page 23 area that we were at? Can we go back to page 14, dual enrollment, for a second? And it may be, Mr. Roland may have some insight into the conversation, just because it's on that. I brought this up before, and this is not a Citrus County district only issue, but we have a situation, and I'm so smiling as I look at Ms. Bryant because she's dealt with this with her family directly over the years, where evidently, the College of Central Florida, they want us all to be on the same page as far as admissions for dual enrollment. But we've had some circumstances where we have a student that is substantially advanced, but they are in a subject area, let's say math, for example. But they are a rising sophomore, and they're not going to be able to participate in dual enrollment until they have, among other things, completed the FSA for a 10th grade. So regardless of how expert they may be in math, and I understand the conversation, which is that we want them to be successful students, they can enroll in any class if they're accepted to CF, so it's not like we can tell them only math, et cetera. Here's my problem. I've got a student this year that I know, they are a rising sophomore. They, they would pass the purr, which is part of the requirement. They have the required six credits for high school. And they are on track at this point to graduate with a Florida or Citrus County diploma. Problem is, they want to take dual enrollment. They want to maximize that amount of dual enrollment that they can take. They can't, because as a public school student, they can't. But they can drop out or withdraw from the Citrus County school system, become a homeschool student, be permitted to go to CF, take Florida Virtual for the other remaining classes. If they get a high enough score on the ACT, they can re-enter now as a junior into our school system and graduate on track. Would that be correct?
Yes.
So we have a situation, and we, by the way, is not Citrus County. I want to, Mr. Roland, to make sure you understand. Rowland, make sure you understand, I'm not saying we are preventing this, although I think sometimes that has been thought in the community. We really want to do it to the best interest of the student. But we've got a situation where we're actually, have students that can drop out of the Citrus County public school system for a year, in order to then just come back, only because we have an agreement with CF that isn't the same as, for example, if they're a home school student. And I'm struggling with that.
I think that's related to legislation that says a home school student.
Legislation allows the home school student, but there's nothing that says we shouldn't be able to have an articulation agreement that doesn't put us in this position. Because it's our, articulation agreement alone is the only thing that's causing it. I know we have it in the pupil progression plan, but that's because it's in our articulation agreement.
And CF, yeah, I mean, they would be open to discussion, I don't know if we would convince everybody in the tri-county group that we have that does articulation together. I mean, so that's something we can discuss. But I know last year when we lessened, because of the late FSA scores, when we lessened the criteria to get in, and we had more students unsuccessful. So, I know one side of it is, okay, it's not fair, because home school, a home school student can go take the dual enrollment courses, but our students at Citrus County cannot. But at the same time, we're putting the bill for those students that do take it within Citrus County, and we're sending kids off to be unsuccessful. As soon as they are unsuccessful at one course, they cannot take any more dual enrollment courses, so, but there's a lot of factors at play in that decision.
And there is, but, for example, in Marion County, they have Westport High School. So those students have some options. If they want to graduate with an AA degree their senior year, Westport provides them some of those options. We don't have that, I mean, we have a, I believe, a designated school, and I believe it is designated as Westport, is it not, for our collegiate academy? So we can send them to Marion County, and those students can do that. So I, I understand the argument, but I can tell you, I know of a student this year that is going to withdraw from the Citrus County school system, not because they don't love it, they love the school system, they have every intentions of enrolling their junior year back in our school system. Their only purpose is because they know their student is going to be successful, they're an IB student, and they are actually dropping out, because what they want to do is they want to go and graduate with an AA degree.
And if that's the wishes of the board, to try to push in that direction, to allow more flexibility, we can have those conversations when we do articulation in the future.
I mean, board members, is there a reason? It doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And by the way, and I say home school, I am thrilled that home school students are having this option. And I will be the first to tell you, I have a lot of conversations with home school families that are saying, we are maximizing that use of that, and frankly, they're saving their families thousands of dollars every year for the amount of courses they'll do. If they can graduate with an AA degree, they pretty much go to any college they want in the state of Florida, and they're going to be accepted, so.
It does restrict your bright futures money, if those are the students that are usually in that category, when you finish with the AA before you get out of high school.
But the bright futures is only going to represent typically about three thousand each year, or six thousand for the, for those two years that they wouldn't. In the meantime, they've, they have half their college done, which is probably equal close to the thirty thousand dollars, so.
And if we want to explore that option for articulation?
Just to clarify the option, you're saying, students, this example you used was, is a good math student that has passed FSA, should take math class, but you're saying you're away with the FSA requirements, or they could just?
I'm saying that, for example, if they're successful, that's what we're interested in, that means successful.
We have to define what success is.
But, but for example, the, I believe that if they're a home school student, they have to pass the written part of the PERC, and/or they have to have a concordant score on the ACT, which I believe it's a nineteen. So the question I'm saying is, I'm not saying that there shouldn't be criteria, I'm saying that what we've done is put, and I say we, the articulation agreement states they have to have completed the tenth grade FSA, there is no other alternative?
It says they have to meet their graduation requirements as far as testing is concerned.
Look, but in the articulation agreement right here, it says, because I just read it here. Now, articulation is, thank you, sir. Is it, yeah. So they will, it says, additionally, students must have passed the tenth grade reading statewide assessment test, and the EOC for Algebra I, and geometry for consideration. If the student, as we know, the students we're talking about, many of them have finished at middle school, right? They've already passed the PERC on the math, or they need to, because they'd already passed geometry. But, but the only requirement then is they must finish that tenth grade, basically, and pass the FSA. Why wouldn't we have just an alternative option as a home school student, and statute does, where they have either the PERC, or they have a concordant score on an ACT SAT, instead of that tenth grade FSA? The reason we all know they put the tenth grade FSA is they want to create a sixteen-year-old barrier. That's really what they're doing. But the only ones that are having that are public school students. Statute doesn't permit that for public school students, I mean, for other students. So why are we doing?
Typically, you'd be a seventh grade student, and they would be around eleven, twelve years old.
So, so eleven, twelve-year-olds, they would only?
No, no, they would have to have passed by the rest of this, they would still have to have passed Algebra I and geometry in the seventh grade.
Seventh grade usually is, the advanced kids take Algebra, they're extremely advanced kids.
It would be freshmen is what.
Twelve grade take geometry, so you would be talking about thirteen.
But statute also requires that they have six high school credits, that's another part of that. You're not going to have six high school credits typically by your, in your middle school years. You're really predominantly talking about rising sophomores. That's really who we're talking about. Because the statute says six high school credit hours, they have to have passed either the PERC, or have passed the geometry portion, and they have to have passed the tenth grade FSA. All that, we're really, the barrier is tenth grade FSA in, for beating. And our reasoning, and I say our, the articulation agreement's reasoning is, we want our students to be successful, if they were to get, I believe, a D or, they're done.
D or S, they can't take it anymore.
But, but that's still a parent's decision. That shouldn't be necessarily our policy prohibiting, that shouldn't a parent have that right? I guess I feel like the parent should be a part of that process, not our policy prohibiting. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I agree with you.
Well, the thing is, this would have to first be defined in the articulation agreement before we can change it here, right?
Oh, no, absolutely.
Right, we're not saying, we can't really change it here now.
We can't change it here now.
But we can agree that when we get to the articulation discussion.
We have to give staff that direction to say, we would like to open that conversation up. But it kind of starts at the articulation agreement process, it ends here at the pupil progression plan, is it not?
I don't think CFCs will object.
Oh, yes, they might.
They have, they have home school kids.
Yeah, they have home school kids now.
Yeah, I think, I think they would be open to discussion, they're pretty open-minded, you know, they've had some issues over there, but I think they're pretty open-minded to a lot of those discussions.
I have no problem with the idea that there is requirements. Six credit hours in high school seems to me to define, basically, that you're going to have to be a rising sophomore. There's a few, you could, I guess, considerably, it still would be very tough, I think, maybe your second semester of your freshman year, if you were really lucky, you could get that to happen.
Do you have that six credits in front of you, because I believe it was four?
I don't have it in front of me, but I thought, I, you're right, it's four full years, no?
Four credits.
That's in it here.
I'll look it up, I'm pretty sure.
It's rather four or six, I believe it was four of that.
Well, I would, personally, I would not have an issue with sophomore, but I tell you, I'm not sure if I want freshman, I have an opportunity to do a moment.
But then we, and that's what I say, that doesn't mean we couldn't, there isn't, there are ways to address that, but one of the things that we know that the state colleges have done away with is an age. They haven't wanted an age. Statute now, for everyone but the articulation agreement, has done away with an age. So why are we imposing?
I don't think there's an age in the articulation, but the criteria.
But they do by the, by the mere fact that you're going to have to be, have finished your sophomore year.
And I think that, as some of those discussions have been had over this last year, just by various people, I know that's sometimes brought up as a concern, if you have, you know, twelve and thirteen-year-old students on a college campus, what is our liability, since we are endorsing the dual enrollment?
Except, the two things, one, I don't think we're talking about twelve and thirteen-year-olds, I think that by what we're talking about, we're talking about high school students. And I think there's a way of addressing that through requirements. But two, I still go back to, as a parent, if they're at Westport, they're starting college-level courses, they're not going to be with college students on CF, but their material is going to be of a college level. We have kids in the Health Academy that are working with patients, and that, to me, is equally as mature material. So I'm, I, I don't necessarily think we are endorsing, but we are permitting a student to have an option. And again, I don't disagree with where the thinking process that's got us to this point. My concern is, though, is we have an inequity that's taking place. If I have a student that is saying I'm going to drop out of school, and by dropping out of Citrus County school system, they're going to be permitted to go to CF, only to return as a junior, something doesn't seem right about that.
Basically, what we're saying is you don't have to take that English two and pass that, the state assessment for English, to get into dual enrollment. We would be suspending that, or doing away with that, whatever language you want to use for English two. You don't have to pass that state assessment for English two to be eligible for college classes.
As a sophomore, if I recall, CF only allows you to take two, or is it three credit hours or?
Yeah, there's a scale.
There's a very, I mean, they've also set up, it's not like you can, you can take all of your classes in. And that's what concerns me, is what we're now saying is, we're going to send them to Florida Virtual for Aaron to do this, they could drop out, go to Florida Virtual for eighty percent of their courses to take a dual enrollment course. Why, I don't, I can't see the rationale, and I'm not sure that, I understand the thinking, the concerns, but I feel like we're worrying about a lot of things that could be, and yet we have a way of saying, but they've passed the ACT, many of these kids have taken the ACT or the SAT by their freshman year. These types of students we're talking about, they've passed geometry, we're just saying to them, basically, they're going to have to leave our school system, only to return, and I don't get it.
Encourage your own health.
I mean, that's the part I don't get, and I, I.
They're not, they're not.
No, they're just, they're, that's why I want to say, where they're withdrawing.
They're withdrawing some of their home school.
I just think, I guess what I'm saying is, is if the board is not objective to it, I think we should open a conversation of what that is. I would agree, I'm, with Mr. Don, I'm not suggesting we have eighth graders running around CF, but I am saying that if we are holding students back purely because of this one issue, but CF has other kids that are younger than that that are attending, then that's, that doesn't seem appropriate. It's not adequate.
Besides that, we was wanting.
In addition, yeah. If they were to withdraw, and go and do Florida.
We think they're doing.
No, the Florida Virtual, if they were to then withdraw and do the rest of it at Florida Virtual, then they, Florida.
Or we would.
That's true.
You know, maybe something we want to put it together in committee, and with the board to remember on, just to discuss, let's really hash it out before we jump into it, weigh the pros and cons, and see if there's anything that we missed, maybe a high school administrator, and have that discussion.
Well, I think that's something, I think the high school, it really is, that's what the high school, I'm sorry, Mr. Mo, what's the high, the high school directions committee? I think that's something that really would be easy to take that.
Yeah.
That's who would be appropriate to have that conversation. Guidance counselors are struggling with this right now, because they're getting parents calling them, and these parents know, I mean, they know what they're talking about.
Yeah, part of the problem is when the, when the FSA scores were late, and they was, the criteria was suspended, so everybody was operating now, oh, it's, now that's the new rule, is anybody can get in, you don't have to pass their state assessment. But once the FSA scores came in, then that, they were reinforced, reenacted, that we are going to continue with the graduation requirements. So it gave some parents the false sense that there was no longer a criteria for getting into dual enrollment, but now they came back, like, oh, wait a minute, I thought that was not required, so that's why I created a.
And then what amplified that is when the legislature passed this new situation, where if you're not, you don't have an articulation agreement.
Because you would have, you would have eleven graders that are qualified, four that are qualified, what happened, they passed the PERC, they're still not passing the FSA.
And I would say, that's why I say, but not if the requirement states that we have in the articulation agreement and in the pupil progression plan, that they would need to get a concordant score on the ACT or the SAT. Then, then they would still, because we are concerned about that. But I'm just saying is, is that if they have gotten a score that would have satisfied the same requirement as the FSA for tenth grade reading, but they can do that even as a freshman, if they have a, and again, for some reason, it's either the PERC score or the ACT score, they would have to, and that would be something they would have to do, otherwise, they're going to have to wait until they're juniors. But they could be juniors, and like you said, juniors and seniors.
I would like to see a cost projection, though, too, I mean, if there is a committee.
PERC, PERC is for your math, and the ACT, SAT would be for, but isn't there a PERC that the college uses for writing? I believe that there's a PERC that they use for writing, and that's where the homeschoolers are going in and doing it. Mr. Don, have a question.
Yeah, I just, I just, I would like to see a cost projection, I don't think, we're talking about a whole lot of students here, so, but once we, if we were to allow a new benefit, it sure would be tough to have to cut it back if there were, there was an issue with, you know, funding. So I would, you know, I don't know if you could do a very good cost projection, but I think we need to look at some of that added cost that it'll bring to the district. I'm surprised, but I've had two parents talk to me about dual enrollment that didn't realize that we were paying for that. That's cost in the district. So they thought it was just free, that the college was giving it to us for free. No, it's not the case.
Yeah, and we can try to analyze and try to figure out how we might be able to do a projection, but I don't know how we would possibly do a projection. And I don't know how we would ever, or why we would ever make a decision that's in the best interest of students, when frankly, statute will permit that. We can't stop a student from taking any of those courses, Florida Virtual courses, they can take multiple Florida Virtual courses, we lose the FTE on that, but we have no say in it. If a student signs up for two Florida Virtual courses on top of a full load, and they do that, Florida Virtual gets paid first, and we get, we take, we get two one-sevenths of our FTE is reduced every time they take it.
This will be an additional cost to our operating fund, I mean, this will.
But it would be, I'm saying, in multiple areas, that's the case. That's the carry, the case any time a student takes a Florida Virtual course, that costs this, this district funds, because if they have a full load, and they take a Florida Virtual, which we cannot prohibit them from doing.
Right, but right now, we're not allowing those students that you've talked about to do, to take dual enrollment. So if we allowed that benefit, then we'd be opening the door up to additional costs.
But I'm saying there are other areas where that's the case, and we would always do that for the best interest of students. You're talking about, really, if we were restricting those types of things, there's a lot of other areas where that is the case, where the students have a right to that education. And again, here's an example, if they have a right to it now as a home school student, by gosh, they should have a right to it that as a public school student.
But right now, we haven't given that, that is not defined in the articulation agreement, so these would be additional costs to the district.
Correct. Absolutely, but any time a student takes a FLBL, a Florida Virtual course, it costs the district money in addition to that. We have to expand that all the time. We could try and find a way of restricting that, but why would we ever try and do that, when that would be to the detriment of students?
Well, that's why I'm trying to say that we can't expand if we don't have the revenue to cover the expansion.
to cover the expansion. I mean, that's just...
Do we really think we would have the revenue on a situation like this?
Well, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Our entire budget is, I believe, for dual enrollment is under $200,000 for first, for actual courses. So I would have trouble making decisions of that minute nature in impacting a parent's decision.
Well, there's going to be, we've got, there'll be a lot of big decisions to make in the next three or four years.
There's a lot of capital decisions.
Well, and there's, that's going to affect operations budget, though, too, if we don't have revenue.
Absolutely, but then we need to start talking about vehicles and other measures.
Sure, and I agree. I agree. All those things will be on the table.
In the committee, yeah. Put all of them on the table, discuss it in the committee and see where we are, what we can do.
But we never have, as this board, made restrictive decisions that would impact a student's ability to expand their course options. And I have a very strong concern if we're putting that out there on a situation like this, especially if staff's not even sure how they could analyze that.
I don't think we would. I just think we need to discuss the full parameter of what you're talking about, how that's area. I don't think we would ever restrict this.
So that'll be a good agenda, the ISO Directions committee, for the first time we meet.
Because every time we talk about something, suddenly a new door opens for me, I shouldn't think of that. And we need to think of it. It's up to us. It's our responsibility. Let's do that. Thank you.
I want to ask a question. We're going to go. They're not going to answer.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that question. No, this is the simple one. It's on page 62. It's about the final grade calculation and the grade issue. And I'm just looking at the final grade like for A, 3.30 to 4.0. And if you have those averages in your issue today.
Correct.
I must have missed the change because it used to be much higher than that.
This was a change made last year. This is in, I believe it was in last year's Student Progression Plan. I don't think we've got that in this year.
So will we hear about, this student has this grade point average. It's based on this, and it's, to me, I thought of it as a slope to me. You know, you used to have much higher to get A, you'd have, what, 3.5 or something? I remember what it was, but it wasn't 3.30.
I'm not sure what the old scale was. This was in place.
And you mean like, A is 900 to 100, right? Yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, but 3.30 to 4, here it's 3.4. And that doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem logical for this. That you could get a 3.30 and get an A, a 4.
I understand what you're saying. We did not make that change this year. This was done previously.
Yeah, and why? Why is that? Huge difference. There's a slower.
I know most of the decisions made with the Student Progression Plan are done with principals and school-based personnel and board members, and everyone's involved in it, so I'm sure whenever this was placed in there, there was plenty of discussion. I just wasn't there for that discussion.
And like, if a 0.60 converts to a D, that is often looked, and you're still passed. But if you look at here, 60, well, 669. Yeah, yeah, that, but where it has the numbers and the letter grades, it's not a little under that. That makes perfect sense.
And that's what they do. They, a student does get a percentage grade in a class, and then it goes on the report card as an A, B, C, D, or F. And for the final calculation, this is the scale that's used to calculate final grades.
Final grades being at the end of every year?
Yeah, end-of-year grades. And that's, again, when we have those Student Progression Plan discussions, if that's an area that a board member wants to discuss.
I was at one college, a bachelor's degree, and a 96 started the A, 96. And people were 90.
But this is not the same.
Oh, I know, I know that is, but others were, it was quite a school. Others dealing with 9200. I felt that I had to deal with 96 to 100, you know? Okay, yes.
Because I agree, I think it's, back when, when I was going, I think 3.3 was a B+.
Yeah, right, yeah.
3.5 was an A or A-.
So when this comes up again, would you notify me or?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Page, oh, sorry.
No, you don't.
Now, one more thing I was going to ask, last, it is... Okay, so we're ready to discuss it. Okay, you'll discuss it today. Okay, now the torch passes to you, Mr. Dodd.
I have a question on page 66 on the Academy of Environmental Science. I just want to make sure I have the full understanding of the attendance because I know that was, had been an issue, and I think we've defined it pretty well here. But I just wanted to make sure that a student going into ninth grade could be at the academy for the entire year. But then they return to their home school for one semester and follow, at least one semester in the sophomore year, and then, am I right, that the junior year, they can only go to AES for one semester as well?
Correct, and then their senior year, if they are on track to graduate, they could go a second semester out there.
So their senior year, they could take a full year?
If they're on, if they're on track to graduate, they could go to that second semester. So after the first semester, they go to AES, it would be analyzed if they're on track to graduate, they have all their graduation requirements, then potentially they could.
Okay, but does, do they have to attend the, if they're in the 10th grade year, they could attend either the first second, first semester or the second semester? Is that correct?
Correct. I think they, they try to, try to do it in a certain semester, but yeah, they can attend each semester.
It's going to be based on what's available back at the school, what courses they need to take, so it's not going to be just a generic answer for that. They may do chemistry two, and it's only offered in the fall, at the high school. They may do an AP course, and so they offer it in the spring season.
Okay, and in order to graduate from AES, they would have to complete the entire senior year at AES? Or just?
They don't, they don't graduate from it.
Oh, okay, they get, they get their, they get their graduation, their diploma from their own school, but their graduation that they do is just?
The ceremony.
They have the ceremony there, but those students also invited to walk to their home school.
Right.
Some would choose to send them.
Okay, right, so their diploma comes from, okay, that's right, okay. That's, I understand.
I'm okay. Scott, is there something you need to pull out to us?
Those were, the other, like I said, the other changes were just some date changes and some other pieces and parts that had to kind of align us up with legislation. So did anybody have any other questions or concerns?
I have a personal question. Who are we going to call you, Dr. Hubert?
Hopefully by next May, I'll be finished.
All right, very good. What is your dissertation? How was it for that?
I'm looking at the principals, how principals impact math instruction at elementary school. So kind of looking at the performance and what are the leadership attributes a principal does to improve math instruction.
Okay, that would be interesting. Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you so much. Yes, next, we have hurricane preparedness.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. I changed gears here. Talk a little bit about hurricane preparedness, specifically shelters. And as you know, shelters can be used for things other than just hurricanes. We do work very, I've got Mr. Wagner with me today, too, Scott Wagner, so he may be assisting. And we work co-actively with the Sheriff's Office, and we work with the Emergency Operations Center. And at the Emergency Operations Center, there are times when there may be a partial activation or a full activation for things such as the need to open up a shelter. There's representatives from numerous agencies that would respond to these activations. They're called ESFs, which is Emergency Support Functions, and there are 17 different Emergency Support Functions. We, the school district, we are Emergency Support Function 1 and ESF 6. ESF 1 is for transportation, and we back up county transportation. So should they have the need to use our buses to help transport in these types of situations? ESF 6 is mass care, and that is where shelters fall into the mass care situations. As far as training and preparedness, we, Scott and I, are members of the EPC, which is the Emergency Planning Council, and we meet monthly. So once a month, all of us get together, these Emergency Support Functions representatives. We get together on a monthly basis. It's the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office, the school district, hospitals, EMS, animal control, county government, and a variety of others. But we do meet on a monthly basis and talk and coordinate our efforts and work together and in an effort to plan and be prepared anytime something may occur. Also, there's a training for the Web EOC. This is a computer program. It's a system where we all would communicate with each other. So if there is an activation, we're in what they call a war room at the Sheriff's Office. And it's this big, it's at the new Emergency Operations Center in Locanto. And it is a real big, open room, and there's computer stations. There's a computer station for each of the 17 Emergency Support Functions. So either Scott or I man our station, and to be able to do that, we're trained on Web EOC. And that is the computer system where you put in your needs, you put in what's going on in your little world during this emergency situation, and everyone in the room can access that and communicate through the training. And he and I just recently had an update to that training.
Can I just ask if everyone on the station is an expert and they're not volunteers on the stations?
No, these are representatives from these agencies that man these stations. We also have periodic tabletop exercises where we are called and then we're activated, and it's an exercise or a drill, but we're all communicating with each other and acting as if it were the real thing that were occurring. So we, we do have regular training exercises. In fact, recently, we had a statewide hurricane exercise, and there were statewide evaluators who came to this and evaluated how we, how we act and how we handle emergency situations. Those evaluations all came back very high. Our administrators are trained as well. We have 67 administrators in our district that are trained to be shelter managers. So we are 100% trained as of fall of 2015. And then each year, we have a training for any new administrators that come on board. We're in the process right now of scheduling our training for the fall of 2016 for these new administrators that are now being appointed to their positions. But we are 100%. It's principals, assistant principals, and district administrators are all trained. They're all able to come and help assist, open up a shelter if we need to do that. It's a half-day training. The training is given by Red Cross. Everyone's given a shelter manual by Red Cross that has things in there that we know to follow should we need to open up. Our role has changed somewhat over the years. In past years, we, the administrators, pretty much ran the shelters, but now there's been a change, and we're pleased with that, that Red Cross comes in and pretty much runs the people part of the shelter, the registration, taking care of the folks. And we, the administrator, we're there to oversee the facility and the building and what areas they can utilize, those types of things. If we have to open up a shelter, an administrator responds. We usually work 12-hour shifts. And an administrator responds, a maintenance worker responds, obviously custodial staff, food service. An SRO is assigned to the building as well, should we have to open up as a shelter. In addition, as far as the shelters or the facilities that we utilize, we have a special needs shelter, which is at the Renaissance. That is run by the Health Department, not Red Cross. So we are having a special needs shelter drill coming up in July. We have a planning meeting for that next week, and then we have the actual special needs shelter drill on July 13th, where we're going to activate as if we had to open up that shelter. We also have a...
You're not from the hospital, are you? Special needs.
We're talking about people that have to be, no, they're not going to be evacuated from the hospital to there. They're going to be evacuated from their homes to there.
What about nursing homes?
I don't believe nursing homes would come to our shelter. In fact, sometimes if there's very few people who need to come out of their homes, in fact, this last tropical storm when we were preparing, we had the Renaissance on standby, but the Health Department was saying, if we only have a handful of people, six or eight, we're going to take them to a nursing home. We're going to take them to a community partner rather than open up an entire shelter for those six folks. We also have a pet-friendly shelter, which is at Locanto Primary School, and animal control comes in and sets up and assists with that. And I've had an opportunity to see that where they have Visqueen down everywhere, everything is covered to keep things as sanitary as they possibly can be kept. Then we also have our general population facilities or shelters that we utilize. And, you know, we have a list of all the facilities that we use. There's particular facilities we use should it be a high-wind event because some of our structures meet those specifications, some of those don't. So it will depend if it's a water event or a high-wind event as to which of those shelters may be opened up first. So that's just a general overview and some basic information about the shelter world. I don't know if there's any other questions that I can address.
The generators we have at those shelters are able to run a full load? I mean, what is our generator capabilities?
The local complex, run by a few little Fuji generators. They run the whole campus, every, every. There's Forest Ridge has one that they call an alternative power switch, which is not a generator, it's actually a little bit. Central Ridge is only partial. Renaissance Center is full.
And the Renaissance Center is a generator that's obviously on site that we maintain?
No.
No, that's out of the station?
Forest Ridge and Renaissance were both bought and are maintained by the county. Because the county said, we want a special needs shelter, and we said, well, we got a partial generator there, and they said, that's not good enough. And we said, okay, you pay for it.
And so they've got that on their list of maintenance checks?
Correct.
And making sure those operate?
It's the same, same company we do for us.
In operation range?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's, I'm sorry. That was actually bought by the state.
It was granted after 2005, a year after right now.
And do they do quarterly tests on those or what?
Usually twice a year. There's a minor and a major. And they also do, when they do the major, they do the load testing, where they actually put a load on the generator to see.
They follow up pretty well with you on that as far as making the...
You're involved in that.
Yes.
The special needs shelter is run by the Health Department. And for the Renaissance Center, who responds to that as far as from the school district, as far as administrator? How do we handle that? It's Micro School and SRO.
Mike, when we joined in the venture with Micro School with SMI, and we talked about this, they agreed to and want to have someone to respond as well. So either their principal or Mr. Neves will respond as well as one of our district administrators. And I, we do have four designated that will respond. Janet Tuggle is one of those because she knows that building. She has been assigned there previously. And then we have three others identified kind of as a backup to rotate in and out of the Renaissance. 12-hour shifts again.
We're familiar with it.
Yes.
And on the statewide hurricane exercise, do they, don't they give a grade or a score on that sharing?
We got all positive feedback. I don't know that there's a particular number or letter attached to that, but...
It was an A+.
I'm sure it was an A+.
Better be, Miss Hamilton.
I mean, twenty said that. No, but it was very positive feedback that we got back from there, from them.
So as the shelter, our principals and assistant principals are trained in shelter management, but yet, it is truly the Red Cross that's running the shelter?
The day-to-day operations, yes.
We would be facility, not shelter.
Right.
We would be in charge of the facilities, and this room's came with that. We want the Red Cross because that's their expertise, to handle the heat problem.
Right, so the food issue with the Red Cross, would they then utilize our cafeteria staff? Or would they? would they...
It would be our food service that does it. Somewhere along the line, if it's down, and we start running out of food, then we can go Red Cross, H R.
So our food services people are on notice or they're part of that plan? That we have to open up shelter, there's a lot of likelihood of food being provided and they're prepared for that?
Typically, in the past, we've brought in food. Usually, we've talked to them, made the soup. The people come here, they're worried. They're worried. It's a little bad. They're just worried about the prices. Food service, custodial, payments. It's all...
They said, TV's...
TVs.
Yes.
Yeah. Sometimes when somebody wants to sing his answer, they argue at the channel. Usually put on the other channel so they can just watch.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I have a question for Sherry. Just on the update with the drill at La Canto, how did that go? Just the active shooter drill, I did see that. I know we were not doing a big advertising on that, which I understand why, but how did that?
Excellent. And our administrators were very appreciative of it. They felt like they learned a lot. We had twelve. We had six in the morning and six in the afternoon that either observed or participated. And they found it to be very beneficial.
And you have one, what did you say that's coming up on the exercises? Or something coming up that you had mentioned?
July thirteenth is going to be a special needs shelter drill or exercise.
The Health Department asked because they really actually haven't set that up in probably six or seven years. So they're just kind of wanna...
Get ready.
Get ready for it. They're actually gonna wind, set up three hours, set up reception area. We have a meeting Thursday, the War Room, Thursday, so all day, yeah. Practice. Animal control, the past has come out, probably set up all of our stuff. As I said, it's been a long time.
Lots of drills and lots of exercises. And, you know, when the real thing happens, you know, people recognize that it really pays off because we know what, we know what to do when things happen.
Right.
Thank you.
And next we have the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. You're on target here.
Amy, come on, Amy, that was... These two, hand in hand, excuse me, the sales tax referendum and also the budget because we knew that Amy was scheduled to do our budget up all today before we go into the budget in the year of July. Excuse me. So what we need to know, when we get ready to go through the sales tax referendum, I think in my opinion, we've got a website that we're gonna do live this afternoon or tomorrow. We have on that website, video for me, the sales tax facts, PowerPoint that's specifically on facts, and I can says to vote for it. And also frequently asked questions. So we will ask you all to view that. Chris Daniel is going to put a button on our website that you'll be able to hit that, go to the link, and you'll be able to vote. We had discussion about someone forming a PAC. None of us are allowed to do that. We had conversations about how to raise money for that, have some flyers out, it's one understanding in Western, verify that the school district is allowed to pay for flyers to be made as long as they're factual. You know, it's not all our pictures are saying vote for this, but you all could get a flyer or authorize us to get a flyer made to give out to the public. On July twentieth, I will, I have already paid on my campaign fund, because we didn't know what was gonna happen on the front court. But the legal wing of voters is having a local forum. So I have already paid for cable, which I do not need, so I would be wanting to tell the school board that that would be one that would be manned by the school board and get the flyers to hand out. I'll also pay for an ad in that. And we can also maybe take some of our facts and put an ad in the program. So if you all wanna do that, we can also do that on July twentieth, which would be probably, I would think, a very high attended forum because of the... So we...
What's the debate about?
July twentieth. And I'll set up information. We also need, in my opinion, a list of civic groups, I'm looking at Republican, the Second Committee, and all the clubs, Democratic clubs, Rotary, Juana's. And I know a lot of you are still on speaker notes. So you can start using our PowerPoints or frequently asked questions. But I'm guessing that maybe we can use Linda Burdarami to say, if they call Thomas and say, we should speak during Rotary, if you can't speak that day, give it back to Linda Shewa, call Tony, the office of civic groups, you know, for that case. So those are the kind of questions we're gonna have.
Wait, and that's, Ms. Hamilton, that's great. I do think, and maybe it is, Linda Burdarami is one we can use. Because I've done three, the Chamber, Political Group, and the Sutter County Council. I'm speaking at Rotary tomorrow, Kings Bay Rotary. Shonda spoke. We had two meetings, four meetings, when the lead of women voters won, Shonda Burdette spoke at that one. She's speaking again today because we're all in this at one of the other Rotary clubs. So if we fed that to Linda Burdarami, because there's a lot of times where I know we can't, not one person can do this. We all need to be, to be out there talking to them. And that allows us to send a board member. Because as we know in our trainings, we can say stuff if they cannot. We can say, as an individual board member, we need this. They have to give factual information.
Well, we always do factual.
Well, we do, but I meant only factual, they cannot. But Ms. Hamilton, you mentioned something about, and I guess I would just expand. There's some misinformation by some people out there. And we'll tell you, I've just gotten some regarding, again, just here and having to provide that out. We need to make sure that we are getting some factual information out to the public. I think we need to provide some resources to that. Because if we don't, then other people are giving them misinformation. And that's a concern. So I, you know, I think we need to allocate some resources to that. And I think we, that needs to be, you know, strategic. And if that is something where school district provides certain things, I know we talked about providing information to the schools. We can send out emails using our email servers when it's factual information. Callouts, I'm so glad you did a video. I, you know, if the chairperson is not objective to it, I think of maybe a message by the chair, that a video that we get out there and do that would be excellent. I, you know, so the superintendent's, you know, it's, we have multiple sources. And then, so I think we need to be very strategic in that. I know we, we can talk one-on-one, but this is our only setting where we get to talk together and share that. So I, I will, I will, from now on, send my, all of my dates through to Linda Burdarami so that she knows exactly where we are. And I'll send her my, the dates where I've already been. So that, you know, we kind of know what we've covered and what we still need to cover.
Well, you know what, she could also come up with just a simple list, keep your own form of where it's, where someone's been, where you're speaking. Or maybe if you, because it may spark, you have a group that we could call and say, you know.
And we can make sure the public knows to schedule these, contact Linda Burdarami. And if the board member, if you don't have a board member, they can contact Linda Burdarami and she'll schedule some of them for that.
So Ms. Hamilton, you said that the school district can use funds to get factual information to people. Does that include individuals outside of school? And we're not talking about things handed out at school, but we could have something printed up that we could hand out if we were to speak to a group or if we were to send out and out if we wanted.
Now, you as a board member, when you're in this question's conversation, you can hand it out and say, I want your support. I have to hand it out and say, here's the facts. But I'm beginning to hand it out.
And I know St. Johns County, they, you know, some of the things that they were able to accomplish, again, using the factual information, was they put signs at the schools that referred to, again, factual information. They, they used the phone banks that they have, the phone numbers that they have, the email systems that they have. You know, we have a lot of parents that can email as well with that information. So, you know, these, this information. So I'm certainly all for, for us continuing to do that. I know we all know this, or a lot of us do, but in case we're forgetting, middle of July, absentee Alex Goett.
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, is it? Literally, middle of July. So, I mean, it's here.
You guys, you want to do a call, if I can do a call out, why just give the facts?
They, St. Johns used that that was a common thing, Pasco County, St. and Hurley County. So...
And also, the enhancement councils and the PTAs can also, they need to support and help her with that initiative. I think they can even, maybe it's ever the last, but you can be at your schools and use folks there to call and just to tell people.
As long as it's factual, it's... And again, I know we say this, our concern is the misinformation that sometimes people, and that's, I'm often answering that more than anyone, so...
Well, you know, as you, you all round about, so you're gonna get questions. If you get those questions, if you consider them to, me and Mr. Walker, we can always add, if it's one question that we don't have on our frequently asked questions, we can always update that on our website, on the sales sector.
Absolutely. That's, that's great.
Especially if you're two, three times.
Well, I would like to have something I give to people if I go to speak, the factual information. I don't know if there's a way, I mean, I don't want us to spend a lot of money on those materials. If there's something we can print in-house, I mean, we probably would be printing something in-house, we would hear, would that do a prayer or how would we...
Probably depends on how many, because if it's a big massive number, I mean, if I've done a press release, I've done it, I'm not, I don't know how much I can do.
When there's a quarterly newsletter that we just, by the way, congratulations that you and Research Accountability, I think was awarded from the state is...
That night?
When does the next one go out?
August.
August. But we do do it back to school. That goes in the paper. And there may be some information with that. And I'm wondering, we also have one that has the high school courses in it, the back cover of that may be an option for that provided information. I'm thinking of those, like Mr. Walker said, things that maybe we're doing anyway, that all we're having to do is pick that up.
I'll find out when you're...
You know, this last week, there was a letter to the editor, and it was complete misinformation. And I know Ms. Wilson is gonna give us some data to show. The person writing in claimed that we added all this money. And Ms. Wilson's gonna show us how, no, the state's taken all that back. So any of the gains we actually get is a loss. So that's that information then, unless that there's other people rebuttling it. And I do see, I was excited today, somebody had asked for information, and they went right back to that person and said, no, you have bad information.
There are a few people out there right now going against.
But they're pushing to go against everybody.
Can we their list? Out of homicide and mafia?
Round up the possible.
Always, always think that it's best, and it's their love, and it's their tax. This is the best thing you can do to your children, your family, definitely.
And people have to remember, their property values are directly tied to the success of the school district. If the school district does not continue to be positive in that way, people aren't gonna wanna move here and the property values are impacted.
I don't know if I have access to it. Do you want to wait a second?
Oh, you know what, I could probably find the person.
Yeah, who might have sent it?
I guess I sent you the link, do you have access to it? You did find this item?
Yeah. Instead of skate, Mr. Walker. Then reduce that, yeah.
It's encouraging for members that when I do talk to those large groups, there's been a very encouraging support. I think that a lot of people get this. I hear far greater numbers of people who are encouraged by what they're hearing and appreciative of what the school district has accomplished with the challenges economically that we've had.
Here's what I'm getting, Dr. G, a big red thing.
Well... You might get the same up here.
I still see you there.
No.
I'll be getting a new iPad and a bunch. Well, you know what, maybe please send me about four or five.
Make it so it's on the screen. Oh, in the bottom right corner there, you see where it says one hundred and twenty-five percent? Change that to like a hundred or ninety. And you could actually, if you want, you can, you should be able to punch in a custom number or getting that, that's worth it.
Does anyone access it?
Yeah, we may need to adjust whatever that's in there to make sure that does play when it's put on our district.
So there's gonna be, on the right-hand side, you see the buttons for frequently asked questions. You can click on that and take it to a frequently asked questions page. Cost of the average family, the resolution you put on there that was passed by y'all. So this is important information for people to read about it and find out. Because yours is probably not.
That's the video from Ms. Hamilton. Oh, because it's a YouTube. Well, it's on mics, but you have, you have YouTube access on it.
Okay.
But if you go over here to click on the button, frequently asked questions, it should come up to all kinds of questions that people may have. And if there's more questions that keep coming up in the community, this will be added to this page. And you can see, there's a box here about the loss of funding, oh seven, oh eight to fifteen, sixteen. Actually, went through and looked at the head of the overall tax revenue, the PICO maintenance, PICO new construction, and everything in total. So if you look, actually, the number has grown over the years more.
Seventy-five million.
And that's not concluding. We took out impact fees, we took out the classroom for kids, new construction, that would be taken out.
So this is just at the...
If you take the difference between what we've lost each year all the way down to this year.
Now, you're saying, based on oh seven, oh eights, capital funding?
Right. But there's what you've mentioned in the past, just in the last five years, that's about forty-plus million or...
In just five years?
Right.
So, I mean, the dollars add up over the years, it's just a significant decrease in funding, which is evident in certainly the capital plan as we know today. Evident that we had to go out and borrow for Bushmore High School, Bushmore Primary School. Because prior to that, we always paid as you go.
But, Mr. Walker, is it safe to say that when we show it's seventy-five-plus million dollars... But, Mr. Walker, is it safe to say that when we show it's 75-plus million dollars less in funding, that's also that amount of money we've had to cut out of the budget in one form or another in order to balance that budget annually?
Well, absolutely.
Because we had those resources, and it didn't mean we didn't have the need.
Right.
We've had to do that.
So, the little statement there that says the two events, which I'm familiar with those, but we're using $30 million, so I used to kind of scroll it up and ask, in that paragraph, but really, you were saying, we could say 75 million.
That's a set, that's an area, that's a typo.
These two events, so what is the right amount, because I know we were saying we've lost 40 million in the last five years, but is that a typo there on the 30 million loss in revenue?
Right, we did include the classroom for kids dollars. But I think we're, we probably need to just.
We need to revise that.
Revis it, but I think we were trying to say, just in the loss of that half million over those years, that's what we're losing there.
But that's, yeah.
So, we probably need to just tighten it up, maybe include everything, just.
Right. Oh, it's really 75 million, is what you're saying.
Right, if you added all the state dollars in it. Which, like I said, we didn't include the impact fees of the classroom.
And if you take out, again, just the last four years, we never had any of that anyway, so that is, I mean, that's 40 million over with just basically at the differences.
And people still think we get lottery dollars to make up any...
Yeah, you know, that's, that's a frequently asked question, we get a lot.
Well, what do you do with the lottery money? There was a question about lottery.
Was there in there, okay.
If we go down here.
Because, boy, you know, they do not understand that that's going towards our A-plus money and bright futures, and that's pretty much all of, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Walker?
It goes to, yes, it goes to enhancement councils and your A-plus.
Your A-plus money, and then bright futures is the other part of the trust fund that pays for.
Yeah, I thought we had some in there yesterday. So, we have a separate line item in our FDLP that is the lottery money, that pays your A-plus dollars and your enhancement councils.
And I remember looking it up, because I had to answer somebody recently, it's also pretty small, where those people don't realize.
Yeah, remember, when they pass that, it didn't, it didn't add on top of the current funding levels, it just replaced.
That's what people still believe, it added on top.
If you go to other states like Georgia, it actually did add on top, they, their funding structure is much different, their lottery dollars are a bit cheaper.
But I know this is no surprise, the sneaky thing they do is when they send the state report out, they'll say Citrus County is getting $1.8 billion in lottery money. Well, the majority of that is bright futures, but they say that it's citrus because it's gone to Citrus County students, but it's not coming to Citrus County schools.
Everybody's students are getting it.
Absolutely.
But we're not getting it.
And you know, the years they've actually raised the bar on that, too.
Oh, yeah.
As far as test scores to achieve them. So, now they actually, now they're saying, well, we're not giving away as many bright futures, well, that's because they raised the bar so high that they just wanted to achieve those numbers. So, this was the frequently asked questions, and then, of course, the resolution is on here, too, that was passed by y'all. And thank you, Wes, for answering my question.
And the wording that will be on the ballot, is that on the top paragraph, is that right?
Okay, official ballot, got you. I think the word official ballot comes off, so it just says. I went to the, Suzie Gill's, thank you.
Do we have any idea where it's going to be placed on the ballot? There's three sections of the ballot, there's a Republican side, an independent side, and a Democrat side.
On each.
Yes, which is not bad.
Is there any Democrats coming on the primary?
Maybe there's two, maybe I should just talk about the general.
Is there a universal primary?
Oh, that's. But it's, you know, 50% plus.
Good. We can make sure that word gets out to that group.
I heard there's a memo, something that's also.
Yeah, there is, there's a constitution, yeah, we're writing, constitution.
Really?
Yeah, that is real.
So, of course, where it says access denied, that's where December, the YouTube video.
We don't want to access denied.
I can tell you right now, on the outside, that's accessible, it's just filtered in.
And I, and I think that he's probably using YouTube, but we could probably get that locally hosted, that video or something, so that that doesn't.
Wes, the last thing Wes was...
Guru.
So, here's a PowerPoint, this might be where the lottery funds. Yeah, probably less than 2.2% of the state's total operating budget, so it's not a huge amount.
There is a school board or something.
Oh, there is?
Oh, that's it.
Oh, that's what.
Interesting, too, that that's.
So, I think this is, I don't know if this is what we're doing, or is it a operation? So, a lot of stuff on the website to show people, they got questions, they can go over here, hopefully find their answers, if not.
And maybe we can just update the, if word agrees on that lottery question, maybe we just expand it a little bit, that's something it talks about, and maybe even shows that Citrus, because it's a very, I mean, it's, for some reason, the three or four, I don't know, $300,000 range sticks in my head, it's three or four hundred thousand.
I know in the FDLP, you get six and a half.
But that, again, but I think what we have to show is that that goes to the school recognition funds that are decided at the school level, the majority of that actually goes towards teacher bonuses, which was set in legislation, it has nothing to do with being able to enhance a budget, the capital or the general budget.
We didn't.
We didn't.
Are we going to go over the PowerPoint, that's what Ms. Wilson's doing?
The budget.
The PowerPoint on here, that's what Mr. Bishop, you showed us, or we talked to you about, or?
It's been, it's been tweaked since you were in high school.
Are we, are we going to see that quickly here today, or is that just something that?
We can do it.
I like it, and then, yeah, I mean, I don't want, we don't want to spend a lot of time, I guess we've all kind of seen it, but I.
So, just a little historical facts about the capital level funding, of course, remember, we were at two mills, we were at 1.75, now we're at 1.5, property values declined. Remember, we had like the perfect storm here, property values declining, the economy south, we had declining involvement, and then we had the Duke Energy debacle. But they debated the property values for a couple of years and kind of put us in one place, so. Because at one time, we were about $12.8 billion in property value, now we're just around nine billion. So, here's those same numbers we just showed you previously as to the loss of funding over the last nine years or so. And like I said, we did not include impact fees, we did not include the classroom fees and construction. And just some definitions and some information about those two funding sources.
Interesting, you know, when you see that there, and it was a conversation we had in St. John's County, because what we were expressing was that how our capital budget can impact our general budget, they seem to be trying to say they were silos. Now, they are, except particularly to maintenance, I'm referring to, is where there is a reimbursement that can take place to offset that capital, and then pay for, pay that out of capital, so it's not in the general, and then debt service can be paid for, is that correct? Out of, but I meant out of general, I mean, if we don't, if we did.
Don't think we did out of general.
That's what I was just going to say, there is no real restriction, I thought, we wouldn't want to use that. But nobody says you can't pay out of general, so the problem is if we can't pay a need that we have out of the capital, we go back to them, we would have to use the general fund to balance it. There still seems to be, and I had that in a recent presentation I gave, where the member of the public thought, oh, no, you can never use the general fund, so anytime you, you all are saying it's going to impact the general fund, you're wrong.
Now, remember, there's certain restrictions in your general fund for certain funding sources, but you, those ones that are unrestricted, you can use for anything you wish.
Correct, but that would be the case in any given area.
But there, I mean, there is silos, and I think that's where people have a hard time understanding, is there's different funds, general, capital, federal, et cetera, but then allocations within those.
Right.
So, everything is, for the most part, everything's earmarked, that's how you can spend it. You know, people say, well, your capital fund is X, why can't you give us a teacher raise, or you can't, the two don't go together, so it is a hard thing to get people wrapped it off. And it just talks about certain things that can be used in funds. You're offering much, your salaries, utilities, textbooks, et cetera, supplies, fuel.
And again, maintenance of facilities can be salaries that are a cost to the maintenance of the facility or rehabilitation of that facility.
And I think this was.
Now, a quick question, because I know we have our maintenance positions that are funded out of that, are any of the school custodians, are they funded out of that?
They're not, they're in the general fund.
They're funded out of the general fund, just our maintenance department, 27 positions, you'd say, or?
I have to guess, no, I'll talk to you. That sounds about right, and also, some custodian hours are paid for the service.
Okay, so when they're working in the cafeteria, they're working in the cafeteria.
In the summer, though, if there's a project, haven't you at times charged that project for custodial funds?
Depends on if it's.
I know, it's very, it's very.
It's very specific if that needs actually there, if they're actually doing work with maintenance in that, you know.
Work like when you got this group of high done, getting the school ready.
Overtime.
That's what I was going to say, so overtime, that can be then charged at capital.
We pay our people instead of hiring outside people.
Right, very specific.
And as Mr. Mullin just said, one of the things that we think Roy is that because we have a food service that actually creates an excess as opposed to having to have the general fund balanced and supported, he actually, as legally allowed in those areas that are, custodians are one of those areas, capital expenditures in kitchens and renovations, and of course, tables have been a huge.
Right, equipment is.
Equipment, yeah. And that's been a huge savings for the annual tax.
So, I think Mr. Bishop did one of those for you before, kind of ten-year process, all the stuff that's out there, all this has been generated from work plan, MGT study, things like that. So, these are certain things that's been happening over the years, and to look at the shortfalls, and how to give students some money, specifically like in the district level administrators, elected not to fund over the last few years. And also the energy conservation, I mean, this is one that, you know, I claw the guys every day, because we did this all in-house, we took it amongst ourselves to go out and really educate ourselves on how to make better decisions on how to become more energy efficient, and you can see it's been saved this whole three man, of course.
And that's over what period of time?
I think it's been seven or eight years.
But, but Mr. Bishop, isn't annually, though, we continue to address that, and if I recall, other districts have been kind of studying Citrus to say, okay, how's we doing with Citrus this year?
Yeah, it's been over the past eight years, but if you look at the baseline, the baseline cost figures, understand that we've actually, we're only the last eight years we're that more facilities, more space, again, for the lighting and all that, so $3 million is very low then, and then we have access to $3 million ourselves, which is a bit of a difference, we'd have to pay for the additional lighting.
And the other thing, too, is kilowatt hours can be increased, too, so we're going to mitigate that to increases in efficiencies.
And replacement, you know, we talk about, okay, we could find a new energy efficient window, but the problem is that we have a life expectancy still that, of the existing window, we don't want to spend money to have a savings on paper, but it actually costs us more. So, that's where, I know you all have been balancing that, to say, okay, does the life expectancy have a longer life than what the savings would be generated with multiple replacements?
And if it was like that road connect with the, I guess, is where you figure your own house, and you can save money on what you do, so we talk about this at a meeting, the very least, that we've done those things, even in small, small instances, but put all together very large.
And what do you always tell me?
That's right.
The lights in the bathroom?
That's right.
Oh, I mean, you know, I know this is something that, again, goes back to that $3 million, where the public doesn't understand, there's pretty much not a door to a bathroom or something that doesn't have a turn off the switch, turn on the lights, we joked in the past about the coffee makers that were all removed from those, the excess, you know, refrigerators.
Microphones.
But where we have renovations, we also have smart lighting, you walk in, the light goes on, you walk out, the light will go off, so we're not having, it just depends on humans for that.
So, we look at other areas as well, you know, we have, over the past years, we look at athletics, reducing coaching positions there, we certainly always have to, we store the two mil, I don't know if that's ever going to happen, and I fear that eventually the tar schools are going to start taking some of the 1.5 we have left. Another big one is the direct purchasing that facilities and construction does in their contracts, where they're able to save money by direct purchasing and avoiding the sales tax, so that's always going to be, and you see those change orders coming to you, town brings it to you?
If I don't mistake it, we're currently doing a group that's, I think, the savings was just so.
It adds up.
And I don't want to be a miss to say, you know, Mr. Mullin started in that position years ago that Mr. Bishop has now, and started a lot of those during times where they weren't nearly as friendly to have to implement some of those things.
He was plugged.
But they were, they have been a huge impact to our students.
So, as you know, school board association, superintendent association, all been trying to lobby to, about the funding issues within the school districts. Of course, you know, every year, the governor or legislature puts out their funding education, but when you really get the hard numbers, you don't see much increases there. And we've been talking about the capital needs and the budget process, and looking to address those. We've been following the MGT study that was brought on here, '07, and revisited a few years ago, but always looking to try to maximize those needs that they put out to try to make sure the district is well maintained. And of course, the 0.25, we've been out looking at that, we had it passed, you know, a few years ago, that it didn't pass, but that was dollars that we lost as well. And then with the MGT study, they did go out to the town hall meetings, explain to people, do inputs, we've done the updates on that. Now, we're up to the sales tax discussion, the impact that the asset, the sales tax would have to us, I believe it was over $6 million a year, for the 10 years, so over $6 million the district would have achieved. And we always talk about this, we just can't cut our way out of the shortfall of experience that may have been back in the classroom, and you know, we've always talked about, you don't want to impact the classroom, that's always been kind of our mantra, don't impact the classroom, and eventually, if you continue to cut, things will happen, and the classroom could potentially be impacted. So, the immediate need, of course, of those three schools is going to identify for, we'll see IPS and IMS, and also, Bridgewater High School project. We've been seeing the legislature has failed to adequately fund us in those areas to meet those needs. So if we're not able to invest in renovation and maintenance projects, we can at least re-allocate dollars on these infrastructure, potentially have a general fund solve those issues. So we definitely need additional revenue stream to help offset some of those issues, because we've always been proud of this district in the way we've maintained our facilities and keeping the schools, the classrooms, you know, excellent, superior, for the, for the educational purposes, and we don't want to see that go downhill, because you know, the longer you put off things, the more it's gonna cost you in the future. So we always look at that, and you go back to, you know, Hernando County, they put off a lot of repairs and maintenance in their district, and they felt, found themselves in a position where it's gonna cost them tremendous money to bring it back up to speed.
Right, and they also have, have some sales.
They just got it passed, and that was part of the use of that sales tax, was seventy million dollars to go bring the facilities up tomorrow.
You, I know that this is gonna get brought up again here in a minute with Ms. Wilson, but I, I cannot say this enough, but I think that the public needs to understand, back in two thousand eight, total ad valorem taxes collected for all of education, capital as well as the local required effort, was ninety-one point four million dollars. Last year, it was fifty-eight point six million dollars. Thirty-two point seven million dollars less is fun, has been funded by local taxpayers, thirty-two point seven million. And while that seems like that's a good thing, and in many ways, that can be a good thing to the local taxpayer, it has been at a cost of our schools, of our capital. So when people say, well, you need to cut your way out of this, as, as was stated earlier, we've been cutting. We have thirty-two million dollars a year less that we have had to cut and rebudget out of what is no longer funded locally. So that may, while they may not always understand it, they are paying the public substantially less in education taxes.
So just a couple of things to point out, of course, the asset, the sales tax will raise approximately six million a year. Of that six million, approximately one point two million will be paid by Hatta County businesses, and this is approximately twenty percent of the revenue generated from the sales tax, and I think the chamber.
I'll let you work out the numbers, so you're clear, too, when I ask, where did that come from? So we spoke to Mr. Luke King-Chamber, the state shows a voting to send to the Department of Citrus County. Josh said that they use twenty percent because they calculated quite often for EDAC and also for the chamber, so that number came to us from the chamber.
So we can say that number came from the chamber, from Josh, we can.
Correct.
We're not gonna say it's literally Josh.
Josh did, yeah. But we did, he represents the chamber, and he gave us that number, we called him, and he called back with the second.
And just of note, remember, ticket items, cars, boats, et cetera, that the increase only affect the first five thousand, which is what people are always concerned about. And in all proceeds, the sales tax exclusively will fund school renovation, construction, maintenance, other capital related needs of the district. Depending on the income and spending patterns, I thought this was kind of interesting, a family of four, the annual average household income of forty thousand, would contribute fifty dollars a year, or four dollars and seventeen cents per month.
The average income right now in Citrus County, on the average household income?
It's, it's just under forty thousand, forty two cents.
And if I recall, though, that if you look at median income, it's actually much less than, than that, because, obviously because of our retiring population, so.
So the impact is not, you know, not significant, four dollars and seventeen cents of, of that.
But again, if you're talking about the needs, the other issue that we have is that we have twenty percent being paid for approximately by tourism and outside individuals, but we also have a number of people who may be renters, that may, that may not have it through ad valorem taxes, and basically what we're saying is, right now, education is funded in Citrus County at this moment only through ad valorem tax, property taxpayers. This would share some of that more, a little more equitably, so that it's not simply that one group that is, is doing that. It's been something I know conservatives, conservatives, fiscally conservative individuals, as we have all, by the way, the paper has dubbed us, the newspaper referred to this board as very fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative. That is what we said, we want equitability in how funding is generated, not just one group or one party.
And remember, if it's passed, it would go into effect January two thousand seventeen, and it would end December thirty-first and twenty-sixth.
Shouldn't we put in there, on the all proceeds, since it is in the wording in the referendum, it does cover technology, you know, we're not trying to hide that at all, are we?
No.
I think we should put construction maintenance, technology, then the capital needs.
Yeah, because it's actually in the ballot, so. And, and I think somewhere in the ballot measure, I think it's in the language, refers to security, I believe there's another one somewhere in there.
And I think that, I don't like that word only in the last bullet item at all, it's used twice, I don't like, I don't, I don't like only.
Then we just take the word only now.
I think the last ten years.
Sales tax for the last ten years, it will be effective, yeah.
So that's kind of.
That's, yes.
So that's kind of our point.
And if this is something that we could get on a thumb drive, or what if we wanted to go and show it to a group?
Mr. Bishop? We could get thumb drives, say that.
Yeah, that would be easy, I think that's pretty.
And I, I believe I, I left up in our boardroom, and I'll continue to be retaking it for the map, is we have a portable projector and a screen, so that, you know, that you can present that, and I know Dr. Gettys, if someone needs on that, or, but sometimes even if a staff member goes with us, they'll have their laptop, they just don't have those other two pieces of equipment, they're very easy to, to do. And this, this PowerPoint is often impacting, especially when you see some of the figures.
I think, I think the citizens have to understand the PowerPoint, because we all get it, but when you start doing a lot of the, we're gonna get it. And I'm not embarrassed, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Mullin, right now, this website has taken many, many hours, which you all know, and I know they've shut the doors for many, many hours, and I know there's been a couple evenings of Mr. Bishop's called me home to ask about something on the PowerPoint, because we knew we needed to get it done today and give it live, so we can start July fifteen sooner than we think, so I just want to say to them, obviously, thank you, because I think it's a great job, and you've got a great website to give your lives, so thank you.
Maybe one of the things, too, that we saw, and I, I know that we're gonna get them in the next presentation, but maybe some of the chart, the figures can be converted into, having it into a chart. When you're just, when you're showing it to the public, they can't always see all of the little details, and so it's a lot easier for them, they can see those, for example, the funding model as it's gone down. So that, and you have them done, I think it just needs to be those slides, maybe could be just rolling. I'm sorry. Just, I'm just thinking, like, some of those where we, you show the figure, maybe those funding, where was it, it wasn't there yet?
It's, uh.
It was towards, yeah, like, something like that, and then also, yeah, I mean, that's to me probably the biggest one, we can see it there, but I, I mean, that chart, if I recall, so look, you might look and see that.
Okay.
I think you've already got it done on the other.
All right. Okay, y'all wanna take, if you're finished here, wanna take a quick break? And you'll be back in seven minutes. So always, you'll slide up here in seven.